This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, so it looks like we have everybody. Shannon cannot make it today. So we're going to go with the team that we have right now, minus one. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. So Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Aaron?
Aaron Goldstein here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Mayor LaChapelle? Mayor LaChapelle, are you there? Oh, did we just lose her? We had her. All right, Cindy Kuzinski here. We have five. I'm assuming the mayor is coming right back, but somehow it dropped off. So we'll just let her in as soon as there. We have the mayor. Okay, excellent. I will wait till she connects. Sometimes we all have computer trouble. All right. Okay, mayor, we were doing a roll call when we lost you. Are you here? I see you, but I don't hear you.
Cindy, don't forget, I think you probably want to record the meeting.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I think the mayor is having trouble. Oh, there, there we go.
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
All right.
All right, great.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's all right. We all, we all have little computer glitches from now here and then. Announcements, the only announcement I have to everybody is that there was not an earlier meeting. The decision was made by city council and the mayor to go with the letter that, the proposal that we had and not have a meeting to change anything. So we're going right to this meeting and we will, we will discuss it here. So the next thing is public comments. If someone would like to say something, please state your name and let us know what's on your mind. I'm looking and I'm not seeing anybody. I'm opening up public comment now. I just let one more person in, so give everybody a second. Okay. I do not see anybody. Megan, do you see anybody? No, okay. All right, then I'm going to close public comments. The only item on the agenda is the, the letter, the proposal letter between the mayor, city council, and the school committee regarding the FY 2023 budget. Everybody has the original version, that was the Monday version. And that is the one we're going to be discussing because that is the only one on the table.
To be clear, that wasn't the original version.
Right, no, that was the Monday version, you're right. There were a few changes and the one sent to the mayor and to the president of city council is the one that we're going to be talking about. So does anybody have a comment? I have many. I think this is an important, well, I guess I'll go first. So I think this is an important statement of partnership between the mayor's office, city council, and school committee. Personally, I think that this is historic because in the past, there has not been this commitment to work together and to support the school committee from city council. Now, that's not to say city council did not support the school committee, but they didn't, they didn't make the intent to work with us, communicate with us, understand our budget, understand our needs. And so I see this proposal as a very, very positive thing because if there is a firm commitment to work together, to have city council and school committee finance teams meet four times a year and to really back the school department in terms of figuring out how we're going to make ends meet. So I see this as a real positive. I also see it as a really historic team building exercise. The reason why I don't feel bad or worried about the independent review is I actually think it's a really good thing. What came out of all the conversations that we've had is that the city council and the city doesn't quite look at our budget and our budget lines the same way. There's not the same amount of understanding that we have and it's under, it, it makes sense because if you're not playing with this budget all the time, it looks really confusing. So to me, getting us together so that we have like a real joint understanding of what that budget is, is excellent. I think it is going to answer a lot of questions and I think it will, it will make it possible so that when we go to city council to talk about our needs or to the mayor to talk about our needs, it's going to be a clear understanding of what our needs are and why our needs are such. So I am definitely looking forward to this. It is a good faith statement, you know, it is not a legally binding document, but it really is, it's a statement to the public and to each other that we're going to back each other and listen to each other and work together. And so I feel very positive about it. I will be quiet and I would love to hear anything that anybody else is thinking. Ben?
I'll just sort of echo what you're saying, Cindy. This has been a long journey, but I like, I feel throughout, I've been holding a sense of optimism about it and hopefulness about it because this is, this does signal a change and it does signal an opportunity to try to interact a little more openly, a little more transparently in ways that I do think is beneficial. Just in the process of working on this agreement, it's been a real, it's been incredibly insightful and educational. Having a chance to have long conversations with the mayor who was, gave up a lot of time for this, very appreciative of that and as well as city, city councillors, you know, Tom P, Omar Gomez, put gargantuan effort into this and it's, it's really appreciated and it's like, there's been a lot of work around like the minutia and the, in the, in the sort of the wording of things, but I think no one really lost sight of the goal of how do we keep our eye on the fact that there are some incredible people in this district who work here and who are deeply committed to our kids. And these people are valued and respected and appreciated. And I think it's, it's a great thing that we can make this thing move through so that, you know, hopefully we can continue to foster sense of community here that is unique and, you know, desirable as a place to be educated. So I'm feeling pretty good and I'm hoping that we can, you know, make this happen tonight. And thanks to everybody for the work they put into this. It's really been a team effort all around and I'm grateful for it.
There was an incredible amount of work done with everybody involved. So anybody else? Megan?
I just want to echo gratitude to my colleagues on school committee and to Allison and Dale who have put so much time in and for the mayor who has put a lot of time into our, our city council members who have really gone out on a limb and just supported us and supported the education department. I feel great about what they have contributed to this. Tom Peak, I see you on the meeting. Thank you. I know you have, you know, if we're, if we're calculating like what Tom would be putting in for hours here, I mean, we're talking about another full-time job, you know, plus on top of his regular work. So and not just him, there, there's been a huge amount of people around us. So just wanted to echo the gratitude and you know, this has been a confusing and at times upsetting couple of weeks and months and I look forward to putting that behind us and getting forward.
Yes. Thank you. Mayor?
I, I would just echo Cindy, your comments in the beginning. I think that this is a really great opportunity. I don't know if I've gotten your words completely correct, but shows that we can all have each other's backs. I think is a, is an important sentiment after, sentiment after all the conversations, but not to be too grandiose, just also the tenor of the society we live in now. I think it's a, it's a great agreement and I, I think Ben and Megan for approaching me to have the conversation and Omar and and Tom just and Cindy for facilitating through a spaghetti number of meetings. So thank you very much, Cindy.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor?
Yeah, I want to appreciate everyone, obviously, just to echo that acknowledgement that many people put many, many hours into this. It is unfortunate that we were to the 11th hour dealing with this and just hoping that the good faith that was put into this agreement, everyone follows through with as put forward and certainly hope that that will ultimately help mitigate the difference in budgets by $561,000 and make sure that we don't end up at the end of the year that far in the hole, which would then really put us at a cliff for fiscal year 24. So that is my hope is that all the good faith that was put into, an extra work put into creating this is followed through now with the year of work behind it and the forward-looking work that we're going to do between the city council finance and the school committee finance subcommittees and the opportunity to sort of help make sure everyone learns and gets on the same page about how these budgets work and how they interact. And so looking forward to that, looking forward to the ability for the best practices that could come out of an audit review and once and for all putting to bed feelings of misunderstanding or mistrust between our budgets. So I'm looking forward to seeing that work done and again, the good faith that's required to make this actually happen. So thank you for everybody who's put in the work to get us here and at least put us past this cliff and hopefully we can solve this before we get to the next cliff. So I do think that the language could have been tightened, but it is all a good faith agreement and so hoping that we can go forward on that good faith. So thank you very much to everyone who worked on it.
And I know Lori's got her hand raised, but I just wanted to say I'm really looking forward to, you know, working more closely with city council. You know, I had some phenomenal conversations with city council members and, you know, some of them, I have had conversations with them before, but not, not as many as I've had and not as fruitful as I've had. And I'm really excited and looking forward to us building a real citywide team. So I see Lori has been up and then Dr. LeClaire and Mary, is your hand up again or was that just didn't come down? Okay, Lori?
Hi, everyone. I know there's already been a lot of echoing of sentiments and I just want to thank everyone who's been involved in this process. I'm sorry I'm not visible on the camera. As I said last night, I had an appointment already scheduled, so I am now with earphones and my cell phone and a mask, so I won't be visible, but I am present and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you. Dr. LeClaire?
Hi, so I appreciate the clarification between last night and today that it's the Monday morning version of the document that was the topic of our discussion today because that was a little unclear yesterday because there were several versions. I guess what I would say is I'd, I'd rather get it right than rush to sign something and I don't feel that this document is the clearest we could put through. I think that there are, overall, the sentiments are on point and I appreciate that when we left some of our meetings, city councillors volunteered to put things on paper and capture ideas and then we had the opportunity to kind of go back and forth and offer feedback and as I perceived from the email Monday morning, this was still in draft form, so still able to review. I thought draft meant it was still undergoing revisions and, and I'll be the first to say, you know, kind of as a perfectionist, I'd probably be the kid in high school that would redo the paper five million times until I got the wording just so. And I think we try to live by, you know, the Brene Brown comment up here, clear as kind, unclear as unkind. And I feel as though sections of that document are still a little unclear. But it sounds like that ship has sailed. So those are my comments.
Thank you. And, you know, we did, we did ask the parties that be if we should have another meeting and really the sentiment was that we should go with the Monday version and make this bold statement of collaboration between the city and school committee. So that was why they decided to go with this Monday version. So.
Just to be clear, I don't know who the they are.
Well.
Who district wasn't asked.
So, so Omar worked last night and today to figure out whether or not we could and should have another meeting. And so then I got the, the information that, no, we should go with this letter. And I, you know, it's not perfect, but we could do this forever and I'm, I'm comfortable with what it says. And I am comfortable more so with the spirit behind this letter. And I, I think it's a bold statement to the public and I'm really excited. So Megan, are you?
Yeah, I just was going to jump in and add, Dr. Claire, I totally appreciate that. As you can tell from my drafts, I might suffer from the same affliction that you suffer from, the perfectionism. And I just, we keep coming back to a huge amount of trust between us and city council as expressed by the, the council members. And it, you know, it is a good faith, but also they have put in so much time. They have really already stuck by it. And so, you know, whether or not this was the exact final draft that I would have loved to have seen, you know, it, it might not be, but I, I think we have enough to go forward and I trust that city council. And I also know another really great thing, and I forgot to express this gratitude for all of the parents and members of our community who have watched this so closely and who are holding all of us accountable. I, I place a great amount of trust, not just in our relationship with city council at this point, but also that the community is going to hold both us and city council to the words that we have put in this letter and in the spirit of the letter. So I, I hear you, Dr. LeClaire. And I'm sorry that it wasn't the exact wording that, you know, would have made us feel most comfortable, but I feel really good going forward.
All right, great. Thank you. Dr. LeClaire?
So I just want to, I want to pose the question and, you know, is it more important to get it right than to get, is there, is there a reason it has to be done for tonight? I mean, does it be who wants to get this right?
I think that there's nothing wrong with the letter. It's, it's more of, you know, could we go back and forth and, and keep redoing this slightly? Yes, we could. However, we have, the city council has worked really hard and, and the mayor has met multiple times. They have both signed this and we have a meeting, a city council meeting coming up. I think it's important to say that publicly that we have reached an agreement and we've signed this proposal. And I'm comfortable doing it and I'm excited that we're doing it. So I do feel like we're getting it right. It may not be a perfect letter, but we're getting it right. Mayor, did you raise your hand again? Whoop, you're on mute. Sorry.
The, the concerns that the superintendent brings up, I feel strongly from, you know, the first time I was approached, that this is not a technical document, but it's exactly as Chair Kuzinski states, it's a a, you know, public, you know, an assurance to the public of good faith, of collaboration going forward in what has been not just this year, but in past years, very contentious budget back and forth and clarifying what exactly, you know, the chart of accounts in school compared to city. I mean, that's, that's important, but to be doing it in a collaborative manner. I, I also would, would point out that this is a, an agreement that is not signed by any true employee of the city. These are the elected bodies and their individual positions signing onto this to facilitate a process that we swore an oath to. So do I think that there will be bumps or continuing conversations? I think that, I think that really comes and the the document speaks to it. Really, right in, you know, first, number one, I agree to let, you know, putting it in writing what, what I've been doing, but it's important to, to put it in writing, allow any appropriation to a joint committee of the actual finance committees of both city council and school. And then moving into the creation of the RFP and I think that is a technical legal document asking for services and the discussion around that RFP will maybe, you know, then you get into these technical details that are very important, but for me, signing this, it was around a sentiment and intent of a lot of conversations with members of the community and members of city council, but also the, the school committee and I do, I'll just, I agree with Cindy, it's, it's exciting, but I don't look at this document like the Magna Carta or the Constitution. I, I think it's, you know, just putting something in writing for public assurance, which the public has not only every right, but should be assured that the government is working together. So, thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Anybody else? Do we want to make a motion? Everybody's on mute.
How should we word this, Cindy? I'd be happy to make a motion. I, I move to accept the letter as written and to recommend that our chairperson signs it?
Yep.
I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion? Okay, this is kind of easy. Let's see how it goes. Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Aaron?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. Yay, it is unanimous. So I will sign this right away. I will go up, it's on DocuSign, so I will go up at the end of this meeting and I will absolutely sign this. And I, I can't say enough in terms of the history of not really working together, everybody being in their own isolated pods, I'm really excited to have us working together. And I think it will answer so many questions and solve so many problems. So I thank every city council person, I thank the mayor, I thank Dale, thank Allison, I thank everybody on the school committee who's worked for this. And, and I'm an optimist, so let's go forth and let's make it happen. All right, now we have other because we always have others. So is there an other? And if not, then we will, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Hold on, I think Megan just threw another in.
Sorry, I just listened to the dog bark. Um, do, I just realized we did this yesterday, but we didn't do it today. Do we need to read the text of the letter? For this to be official or are we good with yesterday's? Because you read this version yesterday, right?
Yes.
Okay, so just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, that this is the version that you read yesterday.
I mean, I, I certainly can, I can read it. I certainly, oh, my phone is, I mean, my watch is.
I think we had it during finance subcommittee, not.
Yeah, okay. Right, I think we did during then. So Megan, do you want to read it? And then we'll, we'll just put it on the record that this is the letter that we're taking. We've already voted and accepted it, but this way people can hear the letter we're talking about.
I just want those who are on the call to hear what we've.
I think that's a good idea.
Do you want me to read it?
Do you want to read it or do you want me to? I don't care.
I'm only going to give you the preference because my dog seems to be really just on high neighborhood alert.
Sounds good. All right, so this is the letter. In order to ensure that the educators and support staff of East Hampton are supported in their mission to provide a supportive and enriching learning environment for the city of East Hampton and in order to further understanding, communication, and collaboration between the city of East Hampton and its schools, the undersigned hereby state their intention to undergo the following course of action. Provided that the mayor's fiscal year 2023 budget is passed with or without amendments within fiscal year 2022, the mayor agrees to allow any appropriation requests from the education department to move to the city council. That is number one. Number two, the city council will work with the education department to appropriate the funds necessary to maintain a level service budget and will not consider the presence of reserve to be a disqualifying factor when discussing appropriation requests. Number three, school committee and the city council will form a joint committee of the respective finance committees, which will meet quarterly with the goal of further understanding and communication between the two bodies. Number four, the city will issue an RFP for an external auditor to perform an independent review of East Hampton Public School District with the goal of better understanding the physical health of the city, the resources available to the education department, and alignment with best practices. This will include a review of the school charts of accounts, an alignment of school and city accounting procedures and all school funds outside of the operating budget, including circuit breaker and school choice revolving funds to governing regulations and best practices. A committee will be formed to draft the RFP and make a selection from the responses with the mayor, superintendent, and city council super, president, each making an appointment to the committee. The findings of the review will be reported to the joint finance committee and the city council and school committee will act in good faith to ensure that recommendations are acted upon in a timely manner. A school committee will instruct the business, school business manager to support the affirmation, a forevention, sorry, joint committee to construct a three, five, and 10-year financial forecast for the district to help inform the future budget process. The 10-year financial forecast will also serve The 10-year financial forecast will also serve as a capital plan for the education department. The education department will pay to operate the district with level services. The underside part, undersigned parties also acknowledge that members of the city council and school committee will introduce resolutions ahead of the passage of the uh, FY twenty-three budget, stating those respective bodies' intent to act in good faith to uphold and guarantee this agreement through the powers available to them. In the case of the city council, the resolution will state the council's willingness to uphold appropriations towards other resources if the tenants of this agreement are not honored. And then it is already signed by the mayor and it is signed by um, the city council president. And um, I will sign it at the second that we close down this meeting. All right.
Thank you.
All right, now Lori, did you want a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I will repeat my motion to adjourn. Thank you so much.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we're gonna roll call out Mary LaChapelle.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Um, Lori?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye. Thank you, everybody.
Mary?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. And I thank you everybody for attending and I thank all the city councillors and the mayor and Allison and Dale and everybody who's been involved in this. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Have a good night.